Welcome back to Make It Public. I'm Ashley Button-Stone and this is Nancy Hill. So Nancy is doing something pretty exciting. She has decided to put her hat in the ring for a ride-in candidate for Wacom County Council District 2 against incumbent Todd Donovan. He did have somebody running against him, but she has dropped out. So we think it's important that Todd have, you know, someone running against him. So Nancy, tell us a little bit about yourself. Are you from Wacom County?
I am not from Wacom County. I grew up in Seattle and born and raised there in Seattle, in West Seattle. And then I moved to San Diego for nursing school where I received my Bachelor's of Science in Nursing at Point Loma Nazarene University. And then in December 2005, I moved up here and then I secured a job at Peace Health. After I got my nursing license, I secured a job there in December of 2006. And at that point, I already had my first son and then I continued on to have five more children, one up in heaven and the rest are here. And so I have continued to work there part-time, just per diem. And I would kind of fluctuate. Sometimes I would work, you know, close to full-time. It just, I kind of chose my hours as it, you know, it worked with my family. And I also homeschool my children. I have for about 12 years or so. And I also take care of my two elderly parents that live with me. And I've been very happy at Peace Health, you know, except lately. There's been some issues that have been going on with this unconstitutional, illegal, unethical mandate that's going on. And a lot of people are taking a stand because it's, it's really wrong what is happening. And we must stand up for our freedoms and for our rights. And we need to protect that because if we don't, then they will be stripped away. So in August, the beginning of August is when Peace Health made it public that all of the employees needed to be fully vaccinated and they needed to comply with this new policy. And if we didn't show vaccination by the end of the month, then we would have to be placed on the leave of absence without pay or we would be terminated. And so they also said that medical exemptions, they would look at and evaluate. And same with religious exemptions, but they really did push that religious exemptions would not be, you know, considered. And so, but that's illegal. That's completely wrong. And a lot of people have submitted religious exemptions and they have been approved. However, their positions will not be protected, but someone with a medical exemption, that position will be protected. So there's clear discrimination and segregation that's happening, just in policies that they don't even have to support what they're, what they're trying to do. And so there's just a lot of people that are upset about what's going on and they don't agree that they're, you know, that a workplace would partner up with the government and tell people what they need to, you know, inject into their bodies in order to maintain, you know, their livelihood. That's just completely wrong. And so because of this, because this has happened, you know, I have been put on the leave of absence and I did find a travel job that is working, you know, that's temporary and that's, it's a total blessing. And, um, but I really think that it's important that as a community member of Wacom County and being here for 16 years, it is absolutely important that we take a stand for every single person in this community as well as just in this country. We need to step up and stand up for what's right because our freedoms are being threatened. And if we don't stand up, they will all be gone and it will be too late. So I'm just, that's why I'm putting my name in the hat.
Awesome. So, you know, maybe let's talk a little bit about, you've got all these heroes of yesterday, villains of today.
Right.
And all of these essential workers who are being threatened with their jobs and it's, it's mounting by the day.
Correct.
Here in Wacom County and across the state. So I want to talk a little bit about, you know, you say people are concerned. So are, are you an anti-vaxer?
No, I'm not an anti-vaxer.
And, and uh, people that are concerned, are they all anti-vaxers?
No.
And people who have been vaccinated, are they concerned?
Absolutely.
Right.
There's a lot of people that are concerned on every single spectrum, which is why every single spectrum, every single person should be considered equally and, and respected based on what their choice is, on how they want to receive medical treatment or their course of care.
Right. So, you know, when I've been out talking to people and it looks like, you know, there's nurses coming out to support nurses, nurses that are vaccinated and they're coming out to support nurses that aren't vaccinated or, or, you know, don't want to be, is it because of what they're seeing, you know, in the medical field? Is there a cause for concern, questions and maybe some pushback on is the vaccine possibly harmful?
Right. Um, I absolutely think that there is a lot to talk about in regards to that. We are seeing a lot of reactions that are happening, but there's people that aren't talking about it or they'll blame it on coincidences. And people, I mean, if, and I just really encourage people to talk to each other that have had the vaccine, talk to a healthcare worker, you know, ask them questions. Because we are seeing that, you know, when I take care of my COVID patients, 40% of them are fully vaccinated. And that's not being talked about. What also is interesting is that when someone does come in and they do have a reaction after they've gotten the first or second shot, if it's not 14 days after that second injection or after the first injection, depending on what brand they get, they're considered unvaccinated. So the numbers are completely skewed as far as that goes and it just doesn't make sense. And the fact that this is a brand new, you know, vaccine that, that we have, which is experimental, it's not FDA approved, only the date did or got, you know, the extension for the use of it. It's, this, this is something that we as healthcare professionals should be talking about. We should be evaluating all angles. And the fact that people are having effects, you know, life-altering effects, devastating effects, that should not be ruled out. And it's, it's interesting because it's just, it's really changed just how people are treating each other and how they're treating patients. And that is, is a huge problem for me. Anytime that there's, you know, segregation or discrimination that's allowed in the workplace and it affects patient care, that's just wrong. So there's, there's, there's this idea that, okay, follow the science, follow the science. Okay. That's great. You know, I'm, I am not against science, you know, I'm a nurse. I absolutely agree with science. But with what's happening lately, they're not taking into account everything else that they should be as scientists or as healthcare professionals. And that's where they're going wrong and they're just blindly believing this. And that's why if people want to do it, that's their choice. That's fine. But we need to look at all angles and educate each other. And so people can be fully informed of what they are doing because they're not being fully informed.
Right. That's why I ask. Right. That's why I ask because you know, we want to respect everyone's right to choose. But how are you expected to make an informed decision if the facts are skewed? You know, you can say majority of people in the hospital are unvaccinated, but that's not like actual numbers, right?
Correct.
And, and so what are the actual numbers? You know, people should be looking at that because it's like, it's all wordplay here.
Right.
And that wordplay is causing people to be so divided.
Right.
And I'm starting to see, so you know, you have police officers and they recently were told you have to give up your social media account information and password so we can monitor what you're doing, right? I'm seeing a very large amount of people who claim to be healthcare professionals and who are nurses, who are starting the conversation with, you're going to kill people, blah, blah, blah. And it ends with, I hope you're in a body bag or I hope you die. Don't come to my hospital. I'm not going to care for you. How are these people being allowed to keep their jobs when they are discriminating against someone?
Or nurses that, you know, would like the unvaccinated to be in isolation camps.
Right. That's another thing I've seen in writing.
Nurses that are taking care of COVID patients. The public absolutely should be aware of that. So they can know where they want to, you know, go if they're sick. You know, that, that's completely unacceptable and that's the wrong way of thinking. One thing that, that is also quite disturbing to people is the fact that these booster shots will be coming out every three to five months. And I just want to remind people that our freedom is not based on receiving a booster injection that is experimental every three to five months in order to live our life in America, which is land of the free. Like that's, that's insane, you know, that, that's insane to follow that ideology and it's absolutely dangerous. So when, when we strip away our freedoms, you know, we don't become a free nation anymore.
Right. And the government is put in place to protect our God-given rights.
That's correct.
Not to take them away.
That's correct. And so a lot of nurses are upset, healthcare workers, you know, are upset that they're like, wait a second, I thought it was just one and done. I thought I was fully vaccinated. Okay. Well now guess what? Now you're not. After you get past a certain date, nope, you gotta, you gotta do it again. Gotta keep going, keep going. And people are getting sick. They are, but they don't want to talk about it because they don't want to admit that this, that these people could be right. And it's not, and the people that are standing up for this, it's not, they're not trying to be all powerful and be like, yes, I'm right. No, we are concerned. We are absolutely concerned for people. We are concerned for their wellbeing. They need to be informed because it's wrong that they're being, you know, given this stuff and being, and it's promoted so heavily.
Right.
I have never in my entire life seen a vaccine that's, that's brand new, that is pushed so heavily. It's wrong, you know, it is a personal medical choice that should be respected and upheld and it should never be forced.
Right. And you know, I'm, and I'm hearing a lot of, well, that's just what we're told.
Right.
Like from, from my doctor, from my pediatrician. Well, that's just what we're told. But that's not an answer.
No.
Why aren't you pushing back? Why aren't you asking for the answers? Because it worries me that, you know, um, so I have a close family member who's been vaccinated, who is continually having side effects. The person they're dating is now, starting today, has been having side effects. We're like, what do we do?
Right.
What, they call their doctor. You know what the doctors say? Well, we're not really sure what to do and they didn't even tell them to report it on theirs.
Right.
So how are we supposed to collect data?
There's only one to like 10% is reported on there.
Right.
That was a test and, or a study from Harvard. And it's not, it's very under-reported. It's not mandatory. And I believe there are other ones and I'm not sure what they are. Like I'm still in the process of learning all of that.
How to do any of that.
Right. And so it's not completely accurate, but what we are seeing on there is astounding. And we know that we can just magnify those numbers. And the thing is, is that it's no secret that people are having reactions. It's no secret that people are dying from this, you know, and, and I'm not negating, you know, the virus in itself. I know it is real and I know that people, I take care of people that have had it. I have seen people die that have had it and I've, I've discharged people that have had it, you know, and so it's, it's on all spectrums, but that, that goes along with so many other things, you know. I've hardly seen the flu this year at all. I've had no patients whatsoever that have had the flu.
Have you noticed though, they said, oh, the flu's going to be really bad this year. They're starting to say that.
Yes. Well, they tried to get us to, to have the, the flu vaccine, you know, and, and we couldn't do a religious exemption and that's wrong. We always can have a religious exemption or medical exemption. That's one thing I want to touch on. Even the doctors are afraid to write medical exemptions because their licenses are being threatened. That is so wrong. That is so wrong. And only two different medical diagnoseses can even warrant a medical exemption, which is anaphylactic shock and Guillain-Barre syndrome, which doesn't make any sense because I had a nursing friend who did have anaphylactic shock after she received the, the first injection and they still would not give her a medical exemption.
Right. And you've, you've known nurses to have miscarriages after having.
Correct.
Yeah. So, so it's not, you know, again, I don't want to tell people, don't go get the vaccine. I'm not trying to scare anyone.
Right.
It's just, can we trust what we're being told is the question. Can we trust that the data is actually being collected and given back to us? Because it seems like it's more about the message of, you just need to get it.
You just, yep, do it. Obey. Don't ask questions. And that's wrong. That's so wrong.
Or else.
We, we absolutely, as a nurse, you know, um, because I'm getting a lot of hate, you know, messages and, and that's fine, you know, it's, because I, I want to respond to them. So people really do have, you know, understand more of what's going on and it's going to be up to them whether or not they accept that knowledge or not. That's, you know, I can't, I can't fix that, but all I can do is represent the truth. As a nurse, it is my job to ask questions. It is my job to advocate. It's my job to protect my patients' rights and to speak up for them. You know, that, that is my job in caring for them. That's what I was trained to do and I will do that. I intend on doing that, not just to my patients, but to, to, to my fellow, you know, um, people that are here, to the community. I will absolutely uphold their rights as individuals and protect them, protect our democracy, because that's what we need right now, because it is being stripped away. And we need people that will protect them, not keep taking them away.
Right. So, you know, okay, so let's talk about, you know, the people a little bit. If you say you're running for District 2, do you think you can properly represent people? Will you talk to them? Will you listen to them? I mean, because, you know, you might, someone might ask you, so, well, if I'm vaccinated, then you may not represent me. But what do you say to someone like that?
Oh, that's not true at all. I absolutely represent them and I respect their choice to be vaccinated. Absolutely. And I would love to answer any questions that they might have with any concerns. And I would like to point them in the direction of where they can get that information. If I don't have that, I would be happy to do that because the more knowledge we have, the better.
Right.
And that's what we need. We need to spread that information and teach each other so we all know and understand what's going on. So we don't just blindly follow these illegal mandates. We need to know our rights and know how to stand up for them.
And do you believe that we need to get back to taking care of our communities? Do we need to bring this more to a local level?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, it all starts, that's where it all starts. I mean, one of the things that I have really focused on just in my life is really focusing on my family and raising my children. And that requires taking time with them and having an individual relationship with them, understanding what their concerns are. You know, with five kids, we're like, how do you do it with five kids? You know, and I mean, first and foremost, the Lord is my strength with everything. And so with my children, I've always asked for a big family. I've always prayed that the Lord would give me a big family and he did. He blessed me with an amazing family and I'm so thankful for that. And I take it very seriously, which is why I homeschool. I don't want them to be taught garbage. I want them to be taught the truth. And so we have a really good curriculum that we have, but one thing I do with my children is I will, I will have special nights with them, like little date nights where after we do our prayers and our roses and thorns, we talk about the worst part of our day, the best part of our day. And then, and it's a good dialogue time. We talk about it and, you know, talk about how it could have been better or whatever. And we read, whatever date is, we read that proverb, which is just pure wisdom. And then, um, we, we pray together and then they go to bed and one will stay up and we'll, we'll hang out, we'll play a game or make cookies or have tea or go for a drive or watch a movie. But it's just that one-on-one time is so special and it's so important. And so that's kind of what I would want to, you know, um, that kind of idea. Or in a sense, like where I'd want to make, make, make a point to make time so I can listen to people's concerns because people need that connection. They need it because they need to feel validated. They need to feel strong. And, and the people are really lonely and right now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of suffering happening and it's unnecessarily happening. And so I would want to try and help with that by, you know, encouraging people in our community to reach out to our neighbors. Make sure they're okay. Talk to each other, you know, what can we do? How can we help? That's what we need to do. We need not, we, we, we don't need to stay home and isolate ourselves, you know, when, when we're not sick. You know, when you are sick, absolutely. That's, that makes sense. But when you're not, no, let's get involved with our community. Let's build each other up and, and help each other because that's what it's all about.
So, uh, you know, as a county council member, you would probably be part of the health board. And, you know, our council has written a few letters to Insley to push back a little. Do you, what do you think you could bring to that health board? What would you, what would you tell Erica Wacom, our health director?
Well, oh man, I have a whole list of questions and concerns, but more so it's, it's about the, the informed consent. You know, I just, I, I would want to know why they are not wanting to give everyone informed consent and why there is such a pushback with, uh, people talking about their reactions. And when they come in, why is it that they, you know, those reactions get dismissed and not even considered? And when someone comes in for something that's not related to COVID, but ends up testing positive for COVID, which we all know the PCR tests aren't completely accurate.
And they're going to be pulled in December.
Right. That's correct. So they come in like with, you know, GI bleed or something different, completely unrelated. Okay. Or maybe it is related, but I mean, it's not, you know, that's not the main reason why they came in. That's, that's their diagnosis and, and, and the way the doctors will write it is, you know, it's most likely due to COVID. But it's like someone will come in, a 19-year-old that needs to get an aortic valve replaced. And she has no health history, no drug history whatsoever. And it was right after she hit the second shot. And it's like, not even in her chart.
Right.
So that discrepancy, I, I just would like to challenge them and say, why is this happening? This has never happened before, ever.
Yeah.
And with, with our, our medical, like we've always been, you know, promoting questions, like let's be teachable. What do they have to hide? Why are they doing this? Why are they completely silencing people that are speaking out, that have experience? There are so many people that are speaking out and they're being silenced and that's not okay. And I think people are seeing that discrepancy and they want answers. And so I would demand answers for those reasons. I mean, there's a long list of people that have put their name, you know, with the lawsuit or just with, just telling me their stories. You know, when I go out in public, people will come and see me and tell me their stories, how their, their father died or their grandfather after they got the shot. You know, so many, that, that's happened four different times and that's just the death. That's not reactions. So I just, it, it breaks my heart that this is happening and, and we definitely need to make a change. And so asking questions and talking and demanding answers is absolutely the start.
Talking about it. Just like balancing the conversation a little. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, balancing it, but just bringing it to the table. Like, why not have an open discussion about it? Why, why are they trying to not, you know, minimize that so much? That doesn't make any sense. That makes no sense to minimize something that's brand new, that there's no long-term studies on. It makes no sense to just silence people and say, oh, not related, not related. Oh, coincidence, coincidence. Oh, that, that's probably most likely related to COVID. I mean, it's just, it's so blatant and, and I, I don't understand why so many are just following so blindly. And, and the thing is, the good news is that people are, you know, a lot of people are staying up and people are more and more waking up and they're seeing that this is wrong. And that we need to do something about it before it gets worse.
Right. So with you being in the, in the health field, do you, you think you can bring that to the table?
Absolutely.
The board's lacking right now.
Absolutely.
In the middle of a pandemic.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you were saying that you're a traveling nurse right now and you work with COVID patients.
Correct.
Is there anything, you know, in Wacom County, it's, you know, the thought is, you know, our hospitals are being overwhelmed. And I've had conversations, people say, well, it's not that there isn't enough beds.
Correct.
It's that there isn't enough staff.
Correct.
To take care of people. And yet we're firing nurses and doctors and, you know, people who work in the hospital. One would think that would be counterproductive.
Right.
And not the smartest thing to do.
Right.
But you know, what, is there anything you can say to people in Wacom County now that you've traveled outside of Wacom County? Maybe that you're witnessing or you're seeing either one that's hopeful or two that, look, it's not what you're being told. It's not what you think, you know, firsthand eyewitness accounts of things. Or anything you want to share?
Well, there's a few things. I think it's really interesting that when we do get COVID patients, that they all get a palliative care consult.
What is that?
A palliative care consult is an end-of-life care consult. So it's preparing you to make those decisions or to change your code status instead of a full code to a do not resuscitate. Uh, but to have that, like
No matter how severe it is when they come in.
Correct. Anyone who tests positive will get a palliative care consult. And I think that is extremely wrong to do, extremely wrong. And, uh,
Why?
Because they're just automatically assuming that death is imminent from this and that they should change it. And that, when someone is sick, it's not just your physical health you have to consider. You have to consider their mental health as well. And if you're going to put that, that on somebody right when they come into a hospital, when you have all the media telling you things that are not true, that's going to scare the crap out of that patient.
Their stress.
And it's going to make them depressed. It's going to make them feel like, feel very hopeless, especially when nurses aren't treating them as, with, with as much dignity as they deserve. So that's going to have an effect on how they heal. It absolutely does. And so that, that I think is wrong. That I think is a complete disservice to the patients. Not to mention, it's just difficult, you know, even with certain patients that do end up on comfort care, that do end up passing, you know, it's difficult to even get proper medications for them to pass peacefully. And so I had to fight tooth and nail with a doctor on my travel assignment, which we did end up getting and, and, and it, and the patient was able to pass peacefully. But that was very, very disturbing to me. And this, you know, patient was a healthcare professional, you know? And so I just have a big problem that doctors are, um, not prescribing certain things that they could prescribe based on what they're being told. And I just think the more people listen to that and not take a stand, you know, it's just, it's going to be such a disservice to our community. And so we definitely need to stand up and, and fight that and ask those questions. But, but as, as far as like really quickly about Peace Health, I know the numbers are 37 today, as of today. I believe it might be 36 because I know they had a discharge and, uh, that's been pretty consistent with the past few months. So
And I know somebody who's getting discharged tomorrow.
Okay. So, um, right. So it's not, right. It, again, I, I don't think they're that overwhelmed. You know, when I was, when I was there, which was not that long ago, when I did work my, my shift there, my last one before they put me on leave.
Well, because the population in Wacom County is over 150,000.
Uh huh. Yeah. But just with the, there's always beds available, but it's just staffing. It's the staffing. It's, it's trying to get enough, you know, nurses to take care of X amount of patients. At other hospitals that I've been to, you know, there are a lot more overwhelmed, you know, and, and so that, that's different. So what, what Peace Health is saying in regards to that is, is not true. You know, um, as far as them being completely overwhelmed, um, I don't believe that. And I know several people that are still in there, working their shifts, saying, no. You know, and there are, there are some there, absolutely, but it's not completely overwhelmed and overrun. Um, and I also think that there's different medications they could be using to shorten the length of stay in the hospital.
Well, that I was going to ask you. So I know some people who have had COVID, vaccinated, unvaccinated.
Right.
Um, and they're getting, uh, immunity infusions or antibody infusions.
Oh, okay.
And, and it's actually not that hard to get now. All of a sudden, it seems to have quite opened up.
Right.
And, uh, you know,
Now let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Are vaccinated people able to donate their antibodies?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't know that fact, but I don't, I don't think so. I heard not.
I've heard the same thing.
Yeah. And, and so that begs another question, right? So if we're all vaccinated, but we know antibody infusions help people who are sick before we can get those.
Yeah. Good question.
Yeah. So, you know, there's just a lot of things like that, but there's, you know, there's controversy over ivermectin and I, I'm not, I'm not personally, you know, you can get it prescribed. I know, you know, Joe Rogan had COVID. He took ivermectin and it was not horse ivermectin. He had a prescription, even though that's what the news told everyone is that he was taking horse ivermectin.
Right.
You know, you can get it prescribed and it's been prescribed to people for years.
It won a Nobel Peace Prize.
Right. And, and so, you know, if, are you seeing that increase in hospitals? I can tell you.
I have not seen that at all in the hospitals, which is just disturbing to me because why would they not use that? Why wouldn't they use vitamins?
Right.
Oh, it's because they're not FDA approved. They don't make money.
For COVID.
Right.
They're FDA approved, but not for COVID.
Right, right.
Because here's the thing, I, so I had COVID. My husband had COVID. We went to get, um, prescriptions filled and Fred Meyer refused to do it. They called and they said, is this for COVID treatment? And I, and I said, yes. And, and they told me, well, it's our corporate policy that we're not filling for COVID. And I said, well, why not? Well, because it's not FDA approved for COVID. Okay. But neither is the vaccine. Well, yeah, but that's emergency use authorized for emergency use. I said, only if there isn't any other treatment. But I'm, I'm currently telling you, there is treatment. And they're like, well, we're just not going to do it. So I don't even know if that's legal.
Right.
I, I, I mean, I seriously question, is that legal?
It's not. This violates the Nuremberg Code. That's, that's exactly what I've been talking about.
And yeah, so I, I asked for the head pharmacist. Head pharmacist was like, go to Costco is what he told me.
Oh.
And we went to Costco. Costco filled it.
Excellent.
And, um, it, but, but what's interesting is the price has gone up drastically.
Of course.
Yeah. So you gotta get a GoodRx card.
Okay.
And fill it with GoodRx. But yeah, the price went up from like, in like three days, it was like, I believe it was like four or five times the price.
Huh.
For, um, hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin.
So that's the new wood.
Apparently. Inflation on everything. So everyone needs it. So let's just jack the price up.
Right.
So then again, that's another reason, like what in the heck if everyone needs it? Why are we jacking the price up here? It's like the EpiPen.
Right.
So, you know, I think we really need to ask these questions about, you know, pharmaceutical companies and pharmacies.
And the availability of them because people are buying the horse one. And, and then I have friends that have horses that are like, please stop buying this. Like we need it for our livestock, you know, for our horses. And so then we've got that problem. So, you know, we've got these pharmaceutical companies and government that are creating this problem. And then they're trickling down and it's like, okay, let's, let's, let's follow the trail and hold the people accountable that are implementing these horrific things.
Right.
And let's, let's bring that, let's, let's get justice on that. So we can live our lives normally. And, you know, in, in our, in our, in our great nation that we will restore.
Right.
You know, but, but that's going to take some work and, and we'll, we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah. So, okay. So you've got, uh, this little bit ago, or during this whole time, the county council had received money on, because of COVID. And they spent a bunch of money, I believe it was over $200,000 on, um, the, I call it propaganda.
Okay.
Uh, coercion, call whatever you want, social media campaigns. They paid a company to tell everybody to wear their masks, get vaccinated. They started, they started targeting just younger people. And you know, what's funny is I read the, the FDA approval for Pfizer, right? And it says that everything, if you're recommending people get the vaccine, it needs to have a disclaimer on it. I have not once seen this disclaimer.
Right. No, it's
The schools aren't putting it out. But no one's putting this disclaimer out, but yet you've got school boards and school districts that are telling people to get their kids vaccinated. They're having, holding, uh, vaccine clinics at schools.
Right.
So
They're hiring nurses that will administer the vaccines.
Is anyone liable if children start having effects?
Nope. That's the thing. That's what people need to understand is that these big, uh, pharmaceutical companies and companies that own these vaccines, they, they, they have a clause where they are not held liable.
That's another red flag to me.
Huge red flag.
I would think for your, for children.
Yes.
Again, you know, adults want to make choices. Great. That's fine. But here in Washington State, the age of consent for medical treatment is a bit lower.
Right.
And so when they start coming to our schools to vaccinate our children without our consent.
Right. We, there's, there's not a whole lot that they've, they've put things in place to protect them and, and we should be questioning that because these are the big pharmaceutical companies are making billions of dollars right now, while the rest of us Americans are having a hard time.
Right. And you know, so if
And I don't think they require their employees to, to get vaccinated. However, I did recently hear that Pfizer lost a bunch of their employees.
Yeah. Pfizer and I believe also the FDA.
Okay.
Funny. Uh, but yeah, there, yeah, it seems like there's, there's, they're like little side stories, but they're still in the media. I'll give them at least that.
Yeah. They're growing. They'll, they'll snowball.
Yeah. But, um, so as a county council member, uh, would you, would you help put pressure on school districts to gain? And because Doug Erickson says they absolutely have the right and the ability to tell the governor, no.
That's right. That's right.
I mean they for masking you can say we have a choice I mean I would I what would you tell the school board if you were a county council member if you were sitting in front of them and you were speaking what would you say that families deserve?
The family deserves to know the truth and they deserve to have their rights upheld and if they have a concern then those concerns should absolutely absolutely be listened to and and dealt with. And they shouldn't just be brushed aside I mean I I've I've had friends that have gone to school board meetings and the people in the school board are just looking at their phones they're knitting they're not taking it seriously and that is a problem we are the ones who employ them. So they need to listen to us we are the people and if we don't like what these you know officials are doing then we change it. That's that's how it goes this is not a dictatorship not yet. We're gonna change that and so that's what people have to do so yes I would demand those answers I would I would put that heat on them because they need to listen to the people. They need to listen to the the families and their concerns and they it it should it should not be forced it should not be promoted so heavily. So it's yeah that that just more people need to stand up more people need to need to know what their rights are so they can actually utilize them.
Right.
Cause they don't and the thing too is that people we have lost so much respect as a nation and there's been lack of discipline lack of accountability and it's just it's primed us for an environment that we're in right now because everything goes you know what's up is down what's down is up you know it makes no sense there's basic laws of nature are being challenged and and it's just it's completely unacceptable so we have to say enough is enough and take it back because our children are at risk. You know I mean as I said on nine eleven at that rally you know yes we were there to honor you know the fallen heroes you know but but we have to lift up you know the fellow heroes and protect our future heroes which is our children you know it's all about it's all right on them they are our future leaders. They will be the ones to to deal with whatever we can't you know with whatever we fail that's gonna be on their shoulders. We have to pave the way for them and and teach them right from wrong and and show them that that you know accountability and and implement it be the be the example and if we can't do that then we're in really bad shape.
Right.
And so that's what I am all about and I will I will do that until the end of my days.
Right and you know people think okay so you know if you if you think you're all about holding up you know rights it's probably just your rights like you just it's only in what you wanna do.
Sure.
But if I'm hearing you right you're saying no everyone has the right to choose.
That's right.
And that's that's what you're about because we don't want everyone to be the same right we want everyone to be lockstep the same it's kinda seems like that's what they're trying to do.
Right and you know what's interesting is that they acknowledge that you know the shot doesn't even protect you from not getting COVID and it doesn't protect you from not spreading it so
But it does actually it seems that people are getting sick and they don't seem to know right away so almost to me I question maybe it's doing more harm for people who are sick who don't know it and then they might be infecting other people that's a question I don't have anywhere to prove it yet but it's a question having been
It's a fair question and it should be considered because this is all brand new.
Right all brand new.
And yes but to answer your question I stand for everyone's rights if someone wants to take that that's their choice. I just think it's important that they are informed of what they're doing.
Right.
And not just nobody should take something with that I mean we always get a little paper you know uh when we get our normal childhood vaccinations like here's this and all the information here's websites.
I never used to read those.
Right yeah.
I do now.
So it's good to have that but when you go get your COVID shot you get one and it's completely blank.
Right.
That doesn't make any sense.
Right and you know I think we've become a bit complacent here in our in our county our communities we just we we well a lot of people don't vote and it's a shame and but when we do vote we just kind of vote and okay if our person wins great just let them go do their job. But then do we continue to be that voice that tells them what we want them to do? And so I I constantly wanna implore people that you know we have to be communicating with our elected officials and you can't just be angry with them every time something makes you angry but you know you need to look to those people who should be leaders and see if they are actually representing good values.
Absolutely.
Because just because they may align with you know something that's more conservative or more liberal it doesn't mean they're actually doing what's right for you and so so you know we really have to push back and say okay maybe we should take a look at and step back and see you know maybe because this person I wouldn't always agree with everything they say maybe they're out to protect my fundamental rights.
Correct that's correct.
And not take them from me and not find me when I wanna exercise my rights.
Well and there's some people that are like okay yeah I might get the vaccine but now that they're forcing it I don't want to. Because you know it when you take away someone's right to choose their course of medical treatment that's there there's a there's a wall that that is put up right away it's a defense mechanism and that's that's natural that's because that's not that's not normal you know with with them trying to take that away from us you know especially when we have good reasons as to why we shouldn't get it or or can't get it and so when you take that away and then you push that it's just it it's all kinds of problems.
Well and you kind of if you wanna take a step back away from you know the masks and the vaccines and and kinda you know the mandates you take a step back and look it's just like okay you can't do this this or this and it's all for the sake of your freedom or all for the sake of your safety it's all about safety.
Right.
And when it's not one emergency it's another I mean we saw instantly kinda do that but then you kinda take a step back and look at the hypocrisy of it all. I mean you have people who are telling us we all must be vaccinated who don't make the White House staff get vaccinated you go back even further and you look at people who are running for elections saying I would never mandate this vaccine or I am definitely not taking this vaccine if it comes from the current president except it's the same vaccine so like we're talking about I don't understand. Right so the hypocrisy I mean it it's just it seems and it's not because the science is changing so much as the the agenda has changed.
The agenda.
And so I think we need to take a look I talk to people who come from communist countries and they are ringing the alarm bell of where we're headed down.
You're absolutely right.
And I think if we all take a step back and look at history of many countries and 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 even what's going on in Venezuela and if we just take a step back and look at what happens when you lose your freedoms for the sake of safety.
Correct.
Maybe we can see eye to eye and it's not about COVID.
Right right absolutely I think that's a great idea and I think too just making people aware of what's happening in the hospitals like with the checkmark system you know which is just
Yeah so tell me about that.
So if you are fully vaccinated then you get a checkmark on your badge so you can identify who is vaccinated and who is not. And that's just so incredibly disturbing I mean not only does that promote the two class society you know which furthermore there's restaurants that are you know you have to show your papers you have to show that's not acceptable.
To get into restaurants but not to vote.
You have to show your your COVID card.
With your ID though.
With your ID when you go into a bar yes.
But not to
But not to vote no.
How backwards is that see that's what I'm saying like maybe we ask
So many discrepancies.
Right we ask these questions of like okay
Right.
I'm gonna go on a limb here a little bit what if they said you have to show your vaccine status and your ID in order to vote?
Right. Right.
What then what if I owned a business and said I'm sorry you're vaccinated you can't come in here?
Right.
What what then?
Yeah so they slap a lawsuit on that.
Is that not discrimination?
Right well I mean there there's places downtown in Bellingham that you can only sit outdoors if you know you you aren't and 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 I I was actually by one of those places and we were talking to um the guy that was you know checking the cards and I just said you know this is really wrong like you do you understand that this is wrong what you're what what's going on? And he's just like I'm just doing my job and I'm like that's what that's what the Nazis said too like when they were following their orders and it's true. Yes it's absolutely true you know it's if we don't look back at history like you said take a step back and evaluate things and learn from the past mistakes and 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 catch those red flags you know and and that's the thing people have been filled with so much propaganda from the media. And they're not being told the truth and so they're just falling for it and then that and that's what's so dangerous so if we get out there and we educate people and we tell the stories how patients were not being cared for right away in a rapid response because the nurse practitioner was too busy checking badges that is not acceptable.
Right.
When you have an ICU nurse who is you know sharing their thoughts about the unvaccinated who you know they take care of they should be in isolation camps that is unacceptable what is the hospital doing about that that's not okay so at what what else has to happen to wake people up to realize that a two class society is being promoted and hate is being just fueled by these tyrannical mandates it's not acceptable and if people realize that and when we talk to them and and I listen to their concerns and we look at both sides and when they understand all the information not just what they're being told but the whole picture you know that's that's what I'm that's what I'm all about is is talking about it all like let's have let's have a roundtable discussion we can talk about it in a very positive way there's nothing wrong with positive discourse whatsoever and that's actually it should be it should be welcomed. It should be encouraged especially with our young you know educating them to teach them how to handle problems that's what you do you come to a table you look at all the pros all the cons you look at both sides you look at you know different options but you don't rule anything out and the fact that's what they're trying to do and just push 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 push. No that's not acceptable.
Yeah and you know you look at history um cause you know there's a lot a lot on social media right now like you see one side is like you should die because you won't do this or that and the other side's like well you're just being a Nazi and and like I I mean I'm not saying anyone's a part of the Nazi party right?
Sure right neither am I.
Right but if you look at history not at people who complied weren't aligned with the party they're just doing what they were told.
They were told and that that that's what I was trying to to show this young gentleman who I believe is a student at Western.
Wants his job.
His job which I understand I get it you know and when I'm doing my job at work guess what I'm going to advocate for my patients for what's right and lawful and I will stand up for their rights I don't care who I have to talk to I will stand up for their rights and I will stand up for every single right of every single American that I have to because that's our job that's what we are supposed to that's our duty as Americans.
Right and so like my point with this you know this this guy who's working at the restaurant and he's checking IDs you know he's doing his job which yeah it's kinda part of the problem if you look at the whole picture but his employer is putting that on him.
He is.
He's making that but why because our government is doing it.
But also furthermore he is not oh I'm not gonna say he's not educated enough but I'm gonna say
But he might not be.
He might not be he might have not all the right information to know what his rights are or what others rights are and that would fall upon our education system.
Yes exactly.
So we have a broken education system we have a tyrannical government that's trying to take away our rights and we have a lot of angry you know and 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 uh spirit filled um or fire filled Americans that want to make a change and and they absolutely should they should be you know upset they should be appalled at what's going on.
Right.
I know I am and I'm ready to take a stand and make a change and talk to people not not in an angry way not at all um passionate absolutely but it's all in love and it's because I care and I love this country and I and I love the people that are in it and and I and I love our freedom.
Well and you know you talk about education system and so you know is there you who don't have kids in the school system um but I'm sure you have plenty of friends who do and and so you know we could talk we could take um COVID issue kind of aside a little bit even though I feel like it's all kinda
Right.
woven into each other but you know let's talk about you know the education system and how it's broken down uh you know you've got critical race theory and and you've got um sex education and there it just seems like they're breaking our children down so much and their mental state is being attacked at every turn and and so I guess as someone who was who was on the county council um you know okay so we're getting a bunch of money from the family rescue plan it's like forty some million dollars uh sat Pauls to do would like and I I believe Rudd Brown and there's a few they would like and maybe even some of the more conservative they'd like to see the um the money spent to help with the childcare problem here in Waukesha County who's it is a problem but I almost wonder if maybe some of that shouldn't be looked at for alternative education here in Waukesha County and I don't know if you can do that with it but I wonder so what what's your take on that what would you bring as an idea to the table with forty two forty three million dollars to spend?
Wow um I would
On families.
I I would um have the funds available uh for families that are choosing to homeschool. Um but I I am biased with that because I homeschool my children.
But you're saying like a portion it's like
Yeah oh absolutely I mean I definitely think I mean it's I I don't know all the the answers that's not really my specialty with stuff and I'm definitely learning more and more about that but I I know our education system is broken and that's why I pulled my children out like I just was very unhappy with with the things that transpired there and and with what was being taught like I just I disagree with with um you know how that's being done so I think you know um it just having more things available for families that don't want to you know be a part of what they're teaching you know I think giving more options these families and having more resources available would be extremely helpful a lot of families are wa- pulling their children out of schools because they're they're not happy and that's good but they're just like what do I do you know and they still have to work and so I think having having a program that was available for these families would be ideal because people are 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 taking a stand that they're they're taking charge of their family as they should they are responsible for their children.
Education choice.
Absolutely and so having that available to them you know very easily available where they don't have to struggle you know as much.
It seems like there's assistance for everything right except
But why not that?
Yeah and and it worries me that we wanna subsidize subsidize basically your kid is born and you just put it into this government.
Into the system.
Program into the system and you just and then they wanna make college free so it's like oh so basically from the time I have my child to the time they graduate college they're in the system.
Right that's correct and
In a system that's broken.
And it's just broken and the education has gone completely down the testing scores have been down um they're they're dumbing our children down. You know to make government slaves like it's just it's insane you know with what they're hypersexualizing our children you know and then implementing the the critical race theory you know I mean I know there are some good components to that so I don't want to negate that and I don't know it all you know like the back of my hand you know but I know the fundamental parts of it are you know to divide and that's not eh no that it it should be unity there should be unity with 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 all of the children and that they there shouldn't be a separation like that um I mean the fact that I mean and I know we we keep going back to the COVID but I mean just that there's an unvaccinated section and vaccinated section you know I I I saw a picture on Facebook where it was you know um colored white you know for where they had to go and then it was changed to unvaccinated vaccinated you know and that that to me is just it that's they're separating you know it's that's discrimination you know it's happening all over again and so um uh yeah I
And I mean so obviously you're white right people will be like what do you know about that?
Right.
What do you know I mean like how does that make you why do you why do you think that you have you have something to say about that?
Well my my children are mixed I have five mixed children six mixed children and um
And any of them adopted?
No I had them all myself all from the same father that's how questions always asked as well. Um they're beautiful amazing children and and they're absolute blessings and I'm so thankful for them. Um so this is they they see what's happening and and they're learning quite a bit you know just with all that's going on and this year our focus is um is more about World War Two and that's one thing that that we're gonna be focusing on and just our constitutional rights and learning all about all our liberties and everything and and the history of this country and so um it will be good to see their points of view and and what what they the questions they have and I think that's that will be good I mean they they definitely love their community and um they're they're against this that they don't agree with what's going on and uh yeah they definitely are all about family and and all about honesty and truth and so I think empowering children instead of dividing them is the key.
Right.
And um that's something I've always tried to do in my home and it's what I've always done with my friends and just my community and I'll continue to do that but I think that's that's what's missing in our schools instead of you know a unifying approach it's more you know how do you want to be you know so so basically what's wrong with me to begin with why would I have to change who I am you know to fit into whatever mold you know that's that's you know it's that's not okay.
Right and so you know as you're kicking off your your write-in campaign here it's super important important that people realize a write-in means they have to write you in.
Correct.
So you're Nancy Lynn Hill.
Correct.
And you know what I guess you know what's your message to people because you are in Bellingham and you know what's your message to everyone you know what why should they vote for you?
Well my message to everyone is that I care about everyone all the same everyone matters and I believe that everyone's rights need to be upheld and protected and we need to fight for those rights we need to educate each other on the truth we need to not hide the truth we need to talk about everything and accept all questions and and demand answers with what's going on um and upholding everyone's concerns is also very important and listening to them is important and protecting our democracy and just the rights that we have that are that are being threatened I think that I I really just want people to know that I will I will absolutely fight for everyone's right their medical freedom their constitutional rights and um I will stand up for the right thing I'm not afraid to do that and um and we'll see we'll see what happens with this.
So uh what are what are like three most important things for you?
Three most important things.
Yeah so like if someone asks you okay so you're running and what are the three issues like three issues that are important to you right now as you're kinda you know learning more and more about what As you're kinda, you know, learning more and more about what this job would entail. And you know, what what you would need to dive into. Right now, what are three things that are important to you, issues that face our county right now?
Well, I think the education is huge. I think that it all starts with education. Um, an educated mind is a free mind. And um, I think that should be upheld. We should be educating, you know, our patients, our students, of course, you know, and our our fellow citizens, you know, that that absolutely should be abundant. That shouldn't be silenced at all. And I think that um, upholding our medical freedom and just our freedom, our constitutional rights in general, you know, just that must be upheld. So um, just speaking truth.
So having a county council that's a little bit braver and speaking out more.
Yeah.
Yeah. So with education, um, you homeschool, but do you work with any school?
Yes, I do. So I I technically, I'm actually, I am part of the Blaine School District.
Okay.
Um, and so uh, the public school, you know, but it's it's a.
It's like a co-op partnership program?
Partnership, uh huh. And um, basically, it's, I we do onsite classes once a week. And parents are, you know, pretty involved, you know, the rest of the week, you know, we do all of the other, you know, curriculum. And it works really well. There's a lot of support. And um, that's been wonderful. Cause a lot of homeschool families, you know, it's they might have a hard time with the organizational process. So a a a program like that, which that that would be a great, you know, um, way for that funding. Well, and and even if it wasn't tied with the public school district, even if it was tied to private school, or I don't know, in a different, you know, sector to where, right, or just to also to where these mandates wouldn't be affected. Because I I do believe that there, you know, once the the end of this month, you know, things will change as far as that goes. So.
Well, we could, the money could follow the student, right? So like, what if that forty some million dollars?
Sure.
How many, I don't know how many kids we have in Waukesha County, but I I don't think we don't have a million. So I mean, that's a lot of money.
So many families that want to do homeschooling now, but they just don't know. And so having these these programs would be so beneficial to our community because they're starting brand new. And so, and there's so many people that want to do something, that they just don't know what to do. And this would be a great way to open up jobs for people to help out, you know, be educators or or helping, you know, with the tutors. Or just just some kind of a a system that will offer more, because there's gonna be a hi- a higher demand for it. There is more of a higher demand for the homeschooling and for these partnership programs. There's a waitlist for them to get on. So we obviously need more support in those areas. So instead of having them go to the regular public schools, you know, having them go in these programs so people can actually homeschool their children. I mean, that's what this country was founded on, was homeschooling. So going back to to that foundation would be incredible. And that's what we should be doing.
Yeah, and you know, so my kids are also in a Home Connect program. We're we're through the one in Linden. And and you know, as I have conversations with people who are doing it or people who work there, it's it's kind of this bridge in the gap, because you've got this traditional schooling where you've really concerned about. You know, some people, you know, they don't care about the mandate so much, but they're concerned about the education that's hitting their kids and indoctrination that's hitting their kids. And and so these Home Connect programs, you're seeing this huge boom with them. Or even parents who have the choice who are like, hey, my kid's at high risk and I don't wanna send them to school because they might get sick.
Sure.
And they might catch covid and it could be detrimental to them. So they have that option of being home through that Home Connect program.
Yeah.
And I will say, the Home Connect programs have been amazing.
They are.
Absolutely amazing. And I would encourage more families to to, if you're gonna pull your kids, pull them and try that.
Yeah.
That's what I would say.
Try it. Like I, when I pulled mine, I did my own. And it it was difficult. It was overwhelming. I only had a couple, cause all the all the rest of them were super small. And so, um, but as I got older, it was kind of would get a little more overwhelming. And then that's when, you know, a a really good friend of mine introduced me to the the program. And so, and it's been absolutely wonderful. The staff have been so encouraging and they helped me stay on on task as far as if, you know, they need to do certain things or whatever, the curriculum's all taken care of. So that's been a huge blessing. And so I just really encourage families to to try that. Yes.
Like if you, cause that's not considered full homeschool. To the homeschoolers of the world, it's not full. Yeah, it's home-based instruction, parent-led. But for those who are full on homeschoolers, they're also a resource for them. So reach out to your Home Connect pro- programs. So I think so, there's MP three in Meridian, Linden Academy in Linden. I don't know what the one in Blaine is called.
Home Connections.
Home Connections.
And Home Connections is actually all over the place.
Right.
And so that's just, there's one in Blaine, there's one in Ferndale, there's one in um, uh, Fairhaven, I believe. And so having more of those places because they are being flooded right now.
Yeah.
People want to get in, you know, and it's um, and it's tricky. So it's just, it's hard to get in there. Um, because there's limited, you know, availability. So having that more available. And now that, well, yeah, but now that there's that, you know, that could be a huge answer. So hopefully that will be utilized in in the way, in in a more positive way to help families that are really you know, wanting this, you know, that they need to be supported, you know.
And it'll be interesting to see, you know, like, okay, so um, the teachers who aren't vaccinated, administrators who aren't vaccinated in the schools, it'd be interesting to see if they lose their jobs. Um, so I know there's a lot of people who are like, you know, I don't like what the schools are doing. I'm gonna pull my kids, cause they want the funding gone.
That's right.
You, then a Home Connect program is not for you because it's still, you you'd have to completely pull them from the system. But you know, I think as we think about our families and the example we need to set, is there all questions we have to ask ourselves? And you know, I mean, what are the questions your kids kinda have about what's going on and like the separation of society right now?
Um, it's very disturbing to them, you know, that they want to get out there and and talk to people and explain to them, you know, what they know about things and and encourage others. And and just just talk to people, connect with them. Like, we need that so bad. People have been isolated so much. And that's not good for anybody. That's not good for us in 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 our entire being. We're not meant to be isolated. We're meant to be around other people. And so, you know, that they they want that. They wanna see the community kinda come back like that. And 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 they do have concerns. They don't, they don't like what's happening. And so, and they're learning through the whole process. It's difficult.
What's your age range of your kids?
So my oldest is fifteen, and I've got a thirteen-year-old, then an eleven-year-old, twelve, or eleven-year-old, ten-year-old, and then eight-year-old.
Okay, so you got a wide variety. And they're all still at home learning.
Right, yeah. And so they learn from each other, they help each other, you know, and and some are, do really well in one thing and, you know, may have a hard time in another thing. But that's the beauty with homeschooling is that it can kinda wax and wane as it goes. And you know, you can focus on your child's learning style. You can discover it. You can be a part of their learning, you know, teaching them all kinds of things. It's really amazing. It really is such an incredible opportunity to homeschool. And to teach them life skills at the same time, you know, that they're much more, uh, just they're they're way more better off in that regard, because they don't get that instruction in this in the school system. They truly don't. I mean, home economics, you know, there's so many things that that kids don't don't have now. And and they'll they'll graduate not having those skills. And it's just it it's 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 really had done, has done a disservice to our our nation. So I'm I'm glad to see that that ship is turning. And and parents are are protecting their children from this and 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 care about them so much that they're not gonna allow this to happen, that they will make sacrifices for the better of them because they are the future.
Yeah, and so so are you saying you will help be a voice for parents? As as someone who sits on the county council, you'd help advocate for parents' choices?
Absolutely.
That's awesome.
Absolutely.
So I think we've kinda just scratched the surface, kind of what you're about. So maybe we'll have to do a follow-up with you pretty soon. So thank you, Nancy, for coming on here with me today. You know, um, how can people get ahold of you if they wanna talk to you? Uh, can they reach you on Facebook?
They can reach me on Facebook. Um, I'm under Nancy Lynn on Facebook. And um, I believe my website is.
I think so. It's votenancyhill.com, is that right? Yes, yes. Okay. And and is that set up yet or is that coming soon?
That is set up.
It it is set up? Okay, okay, perfect. So, uh, you know, thank you for coming on and and we appreciate taking the time. Is is there anything else you wanna say to people?
No, just that I am very thankful for this opportunity to stand and serve, you know, for all the citizens here in Waukesha County. And I'm proud to be a voice for every single person and stand up for their freedom.
Okay. And you know, I wanna kinda reiterate that a write-in is a very hard thing, almost impossible to win. So we need all voters in District Two to come out and vote for you and write you in. So Nancy Lynn Hill, write in. District Two County Council. And you can find her uh, on Facebook as Nancy Lynn. Or I think it's uh, write in Nancy Lynn on Facebook. And votenancyhill.com. Okay, perfect. Awesome. Yeah, thank you.